The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, February 13th, 2018 is now called to order. Please stand for the flag of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given this evening by Pastor Jim McConnell.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now friends, let us bow our heads, if you will, quiet your spirit and quiet your Spirit of life come onto us now that we might find within ourselves the courage and virtue we need to perform the tasks that are set before us tonight. Let us find within ourselves a clarity of vision that has as its goal justice and equality for all. Let us find within ourselves a will to govern without ego for the good of the people of this county and for our planet with all its manifold life forms. Let us find within ourselves ethical discernment. Let us find within ourselves a spirit of tolerance for views that are not our own. Let us find within ourselves the willingness to compromise when compromise is necessary for the common good. Let us find within ourselves a wholesome charity for our fellow human beings. Let us find within ourselves a sacred anger against those institutions and systems that marginalize the poor and disenfranchise the weak. Finally, and most importantly, let us find within ourselves that great love that is the root and foundation of all life. Amen.
Thank you Pastor McConnell. Next on the agenda are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Mr. Talloyan?
Mr. President, I would nominate Casey Gum to the New Carlisle Olive Township Public Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, nominations are now closed. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Casey Gum is nominated to the New Carlisle Olive Township Public Library Board of Trustees. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 2nd and the January 9th, 2018 meetings?
So.
Hear second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the January 2nd and the January 9th meetings are approved. Report from the county auditor?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Report from county commissioners. Mr. Costelli?
President Morton, esteemed members of council, my name is Andy Costelli, president of the Board of Commissioners, office of the seventh floor of this building. Just wanted to let you know that hopefully at next week's meeting, the Board of Commissioners are looking to hire Cohen and Malad, a law firm in Indianapolis, to join Marshall County and about 30 other municipalities and counties across the state as we look to investigate an opioid lawsuit against different drug manufacturers and other entities that might be appropriate. So we're hopeful to take that action at our meeting on Tuesday. Also to let you know, we had a very productive meeting regarding the LEAF RFP. Our hope is also in two weeks from today to be able to release that RFP so we can begin to move forward with that process as well. And then just mark on your calendars, next month is the state of the county. The best darned seven minutes you're gonna have all day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Report from many council special committees?
Mr. Walton?
Mr. Danzack? Just a quick report on the South Shore projects that we've been following, the Double Trucking Project and Westlake Border Project. President's budget came out, they remain to be unrated, meaning they have not gotten a rating either up or down, whether they should progress forward. Mike Nolan, the president of South Shore, has spoke to the Federal Transit Administration and they're gonna have a teleconference on Thursday. What the South Shore's plan on doing now is to keep the projects going in order to enhance the rating on the project, they're going to continue with their environmental studies, the NEPA, it's called NEPA, studies, they're gonna continue on with that. And the other part that the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration was confused about was our funding mechanism, how we had so much local participation, state participation, and the RDAs, both in Northwest Indiana and our RDA over here in South Bend, up there area, there's a little confusion to them. So he thinks by positioning us to continue in our environmental studies and getting the explanation to the feds, we might have a better rating on those projects. And it still anticipates them to be rated. We saw our support from Congressman Laworsky, Senator Stoddard, Congressman Pete Wiskowski, our congressional team is still supportive of this. And according to Mike Nolan, he fully expects these projects to be funded through congressional act versus the presidential budget. And that's an update on that. I also wanted to point out in the audience tonight is a comrade of mine, who's the curator of the Sudobaker National Museum, he's in attendance, is also a fellow classmate of mine from the Leadership South Bend Missional Class, Aaron Workington, from the audience tonight. We welcome Aaron from the Sudobaker National Museum, he's near our area, and appreciate what he does for us, for the heritage of South Bend, Sudobaker legacy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other reports from any other council special committees? Mr. Nolan?
Just a bad question. You mentioned that they're confused about the funding, I thought that was actually a good thing. How do you explain it?
Well, the funding, as we all see it, is a good thing, but the fact that so much participation with local, state, and regional authorities, we view that as a good thing. We thought it was a home run. I guess in the history of the FTA, they've never quite seen a project with that type of funding scheme. And according to Mike Nolan, they quite frankly caught them off guard. So they're actually doing a little more research after, they didn't think we had our local match in place, when in fact we do have it in place. And they were surprised that there was such local participation. When you get to Lake County, there's 17 units of government that are participating, so it's hard for them to believe that those 17 units of government are actually in unison and participating in the project, the one that affects their portion of the two projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda are first readings. At the request of the petitioner, Bill 14-18 is being withdrawn. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 15-18?
In order to submitting a supplementing time of 15 land use, chapter 154 planning in the Sancho County Code as amended, the property is located at 15615 State Route 23 from our single-family district, B district, to B district, petitioners Harold and Laverne Luze.
Bill number 15-18 is assigned to the land use planning committee?
Bill 16-18, a resolution of the Sancho County Council claiming a portion of Sancho County an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-1. To correct our resolution, petitioner Amtrak Industries.
Bill number 16-18 is assigned to the land use. That concludes first readings for this evening. The next thing on the agenda are resolutions. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 10-18?
A resolution of the St. Joseph County Council recognizing and honoring Rudolph Rudy Pizlick.
Petitioner?
Robert Kraschinsky, office located on the fourth floor here at the County City Building. Tonight I introduce a resolution, R2-18, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council recognizing and honoring Rudy, Rudolph Rudy Pizlick. Whereas Rudolph Rudy Pizlick will be, will turn 100 years of age on February 10th, 2018, and whereas Rudy worked for over 35 years at De Torrington in South Bend and was instrumental in repair specialists, who was on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and often needed to make crucial repairs even on weekends and holidays. And whereas Rudy was a longtime outstanding member of the UAW Local 5 for over 30 years. And whereas Rudy excels in woodworking and painting. And whereas, as a lifelong member of St. Mary's Parish in South Bend, has helped on many projects including helping to restore the pews of the church, and whereas Rudy has had an excellent memory and recall of the neighborhoods in South Bend, and has helped several historians fill his historical information in support of the history of our community. Whereas St. Mary's Parish in South Bend has dedicated February 11th, 2018, as Rudy Pizlick Day, and will have a special mass intentions for Rudy and celebration in his honor. Now therefore, be resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that, section one, on behalf of the citizens, the St. Joseph County Council wishes to extend birthday wishes and congratulations to Rudy on his tremendous life of service to the community, church, and to the citizens of St. Joseph County. Section two, the resolution shall be in full force on effect from and after its passage.
Thank you.
That's it. If I can make a couple more comments about Mr. Pizlick. I had to do that in his kitchen for about an hour and a half along with Father Charles, and found him to be very fascinating. And I know the sheriff is here, but I don't know if he has any jurisdiction back then, Rudy, but Rudy also told me about how he used to do some bootlegging back then, and he knew a lot of bootleggers. But that was a little bit before my time.
Yeah, that's true.
He is, he is a fascinating individual. But Father, Father Charles, would you like to say?
Certainly. Esteemed members of the county council, Reverend Charles Alstowski, pastor of St. Mary's Parish, 1601 West Sample Street in South Bend, we brought a full contingency of parishioners to help you, to help congratulate Rudy on this momentous occasion, and he has been a wonderful example for living in our community, being of service to our community and to those in the community. And so we are very happy and ecstatic to be able to celebrate this great occasion with you and with Rudy.
Thank you. Thank you, Father.
If it wasn't for the parishioners of St. Mary's Parish, a couple of good neighbors and a tremendous support of real services, Rudy wouldn't be here right now.
Yeah, he'd be cool.
He, he even, he gets a tremendous amount of support from real services. Thank you. Want to say anything, Rudy? You want to say a couple words?
Yeah, well, I thank you for this event, and I wish you all luck, and I'm happy and to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Pleasure to meet you, Rudy.
God bless you. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
And thank you.
And thank you again.
We'll get some ink on this. Oh, that's professional. That's professional. Rudy.
We have a motion on Bill number 10-18?
Motion for approval.
For a second.
Yeah.
Motion to pass, Bill number 10-18, was made by Councilman Cahill, was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on Bill 10-18?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Danzack?
I'd like to congratulate Rudy as a fighter in a hard meeting night, and nice of congregation here, and supported me. I also just would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to mention Clarence White, you're the spiritual elder of the big event, I mean, in the school of Clarence and all of this contingent here from St. Mary's.
Thank you. Any further comments from any council member? Hearing none, ayes in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Like the record show, that Bill number 10-18 was passed unanimously by a vote of 90. Congratulations.
Clerk, will you please read the next bill? First, on the House of Representatives, Bill number 11-18.
A resolution of the Sancho County Council authorizing approval of an interlocal agreement between Sancho County and the city of South Bend regarding any of the services.
Mr. Triple?
For many years, the city of South Bend provided the appropriate services to the county. This contract was approved by the commissioners, I believe it was in November, pursuant to Indiana Code, since it was an interlocal agreement that set forth the agreements between the city and the county, it needs to be approved by the county council.
Thank you.
And that is all. Same service that the city, that the county has always had from the city.
Thank you. Any questions from any member of council from Mr. Triple? Hearing none, open public hearing on Bill number 11-18. Does anyone wish to speak in the bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, not close to public hearing on Bill 11-18. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Motion to pass.
A motion to pass, Bill number 11-18, was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilwoman O'Brien. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Kraschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Talloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
She carries nine zero.
Like the record show, that Bill number 11-18 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 13-18?
A resolution of the Sancho County Council authorizing approval of the master energy plan and performance guarantee under the guarantees contract.
Petitioner?
Please state your name and address for the record, so you have five minutes to adjust the council.
Thank you. My name is Phil Youska. I'm a project development engineer with Performance Services out of Indianapolis, Indiana. So I just want to take a few, just a couple of minutes to talk about the guaranteed energy savings project. As you may recall, over the last 18 months or so, we worked diligently with the county to develop the best energy savings program to address the needs of the county's buildings. So actually, back in July, as you may recall, we received approval from the county for the contract terms and conditions. We established a not-to-exceed amount, and received direction from the county to proceed with detailed design and pricing improvements. And so we did a lot of detailed design, we did plans, we did specifications, we walked contractors through buildings, got all that detail together, and then we developed the final content of that master energy plan. And then last month, of course, we met with the committee and reviewed in detail all the different line items to finalize that scope of result, that result from our design and pricing efforts. So tonight, what we're hoping is that we get final approval for that scope of work, and upon your approval, we will, you know, we're really ready now to begin implementation and start generating the energy savings for the county that will, so that you'll have the funds to repay the bond. In the next few weeks, of course, we're gonna begin lighting upgrades, LED lighting upgrades in all the county facilities. We're gonna start implementing the HVAC improvements over at the JJC. Also, we have a lot of work to do with the water controls over at the jail, and work in other buildings. So if we are able to get your approval tonight to begin that implementation, we are currently planning to be done with the implementation this calendar year. So by this time next year, the county will be realizing the full amount of the savings. So, and you know, the primary benefits to the county that we reviewed over the last several months are certainly we're gonna be able to address a significant amount of deferred maintenance that exists in the building, so replacing old integrated equipment with new equipment. We're gonna be improving the working environments in the buildings, and of course lowering operating costs. So I think the greatest benefit, of course, is the county will be reinvesting in your facilities that serve the people of St. Joseph County, helping to assure that your buildings are able to serve the county for years to come. So we want to thank the county for your cooperation. We want to especially thank the employees of the county facilitating our access, access to, you know, gathering data, having contractors walk through, they're very cooperative, and were able to help us assemble what we think is a great program for the county. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council for petition? Mr. Nolan?
Yeah, could you explain a little bit, just refresh everybody's ears, and probably some people are very important, how the verification measurement, how are we gonna verify that we're actually saving the energy that's been promised and that we're all expected?
So, well, we, so we do this on all of our projects, so we do it in different methodologies depending upon the improvement, but one of the most common ones is we utilize your building automation systems. So for instance, at the Justice Center, we'll be installing new building automation control systems there. You already have them at the jail, many of your other facilities, but we use those systems to track the performance of the equipment. So how long do fans, how long do pumps run during the day? So part of our new program is to install, say, higher efficiency equipment, and so we know what that efficiency is, we know how big those, that equipment is, how big the motors are, for example. And so we actually track that runtime, and we do trends, we measure that equipment long-term, and then it's, and then it's math essentially to calculate what your current utility rate is, and how much any, to determine how much energy those pieces of equipment are utilizing. So and also part of the program is energy leadership, where we actually put, work with the county, put people in place to help ensure that lights keep turned off, and that building schedules are kept, and that we help the county ensure that we see the savings long term.
Thanks. Along the lines of teaching council, they're putting up their lights, and we're the opposite of the country.
Any other questions from council? Mr. O'Brien?
Could you just briefly explain how the guarantee aspect works? That is, there's no risk to the county because if you don't save enough, your company will actually make up the difference?
Right. So it's, so this is a kind of a, it's, I say it's unique, it's fairly common in the state of Indiana, so a state statute allows governmental entities to enter into agreements, guaranteed energy savings, performance contracts, where the intent is that the savings pay for the contract over time. And so the savings generated by all of our improvements, all the LED lighting retrofits, HVAC improvements, water, and so it's not just energy, it's also, you know, water or other utilities. We've also done some things with changing some of your meter rates and identifying that meters are on the correct rate structure. But all of that is brought together, and we, we measure that over time and keep track of that. And so we report back to you, and we'll do that with, with the energy manager, energy manager that's in place, report back to you on where you stand with regard to those, meeting those savings. So per the statute, we reconcile that every year, and if for some reason we were to fall short of that, then we're on the hook for the difference. And so, and so because of that, we don't want that to happen, and so we try to be very conservative in our approach, and, and if we think it's gonna save $100, then we're gonna project, you know, maybe $80 or $90. The county has some flexibility in how they operate the facilities, and that we ensure that we make that guaranteed amount at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for petition?
Yeah, just one other important point, I think, is in the example you gave there, if you thought it was gonna save $100, and so you pay $80, but it actually did save $100, what's actually paid off?
Great question. The county keeps all savings. So Performance Services doesn't, doesn't take any of that additional money, there's no shared savings or anything of that nature. So if we exceed the savings amount, the county keeps any excess, and obviously you can do what you will with that.
Mr. O'Brien?
Actually, along those lines, has Performance Services had any municipalities in Indiana that have not met or exceeded the guaranteed savings?
We have not. So, you know, performance contracting is our only business, it's all we do, and so we're, we're very careful to make sure that every project is a success. And so we did a large project with the, you know, city of Indianapolis about five or six years ago or so. We've also worked with other counties, other, so smaller cities in the state. We've worked with probably close to 200 school corporations within, within the state. We've done several projects at Penn Harris, right down the road, and we, again, we make sure that those are all successful, and they all meet their guaranteed savings requirements.
You've never once had to actually chip in and pay for the short call?
Correct.
Mr. Danzack?
Just basing the numbers on the contract and the agreement, I mean, I think it's commendable and it's great for our constituents, and early in the county, that you're guaranteeing that we're gonna save $711,000 a year over life for the contract. And besides that, like you mentioned, we're already taking care of a lot of the forgives, but we would have never had a way to pay for it, other than through this operational energy savings contract. So I think it's good government and good public policy to be doing this, and we appreciate the engagement of Performance Services, and the track record and the achievements, so we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for council? Thank you. We will now open public hearing on Bill number 13-18. Does anyone wish to adjust the council in favor of this bill?
Robin Chellinor, 25612 Shoreway Court, South Bend, Indiana 46619. I'm the director at Portage Manor, and I want to thank the council and the commissioners and the special committees that came together to put together this contract. Our building that we work out of was built in 1906. It's a very old building, but it's been well-maintained, and this is another way that we can continue to maintain that building and house the less fortunate in the county. Currently, we have 133 residents of St. Joe County that we take care of, disabled adults. We just admitted four homeless people who are currently living there indigent. We get no revenue or income for them, but we are able to support them off of revenue from the state, which again, doesn't take any county money. So again, I want to thank you for including Portage Manor in this project and investing in, in the buildings of St. Joe County.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill?
Evelyn Kirkwood, Director of St. Joseph County Parks. I too want to express our thanks on behalf of the Parks Board's staff and all of the visitors that use the St. Joseph County Parks for this little shot in the arm to help us cover some of the deferred maintenance that you addressed in terms of energy failings that we have had, aging boilers, water systems, water delivery systems, lighting systems, et cetera. So we greatly appreciate this effort, this group effort by so many people, and thank you for championing the cause of energy savings in St. Joseph County, because that can only benefit all of our residents here in St. Joe County. So thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Please state your name and address for the record, so you have, sir, you have three minutes to adjust the council.
Thank you. My name's Robert Griffin, I live at 4616 Fellon Street. I last left South Bend in 1965, returned in November of 2017. I'm retired federal contracting officer, and I do have some experience in working with the Corps of Engineers and also Navy Facilities Engineers, both with the Army, Marine Corps, and the Department of Defense. And this plan is certainly good, I wouldn't, it's hard to speak out against energy conservation and base maintenance or facilities maintenance, because they're always underfunded, not only here, but in the federal government. So I'm not gonna attempt to do that, because that's a very, it's a worthy goal, and as a lady just spoke, does have an effect on people. What I would say is this, though, I've been looking at this for three or four days, and some of these numbers on the master energy plan look a little rich to me as far as some of the commodity purchased, as far as the values of the individual components. We did a little cross-check with some suppliers in the area, and they found that these prices were a little high. Based on my experience in federal contracting with energy projects, I also found these,
and identifying that meters are on the correct rate structure. But, all of that is brought together and we measure that over time and keep track of that. And so, we report back to you, and we'll do that with the energy manager that's in place, report back to you on where you stand with regard to those, meeting those savings. So, per the statute, we reconcile that every year, and if for some reason we were to fall short of that, then we're on the hook for the difference. And so, because of that, we don't want that to happen, and so, we try to be very conservative in our approach. And if we think it's going to save $100, then we're going to project, you know, maybe $80 or $90. The county has some flexibility in how they operate the facilities and that we ensure that we make that guaranteed amount at the end of the year.
Any other questions from counsel for petition?
Yeah, just one other important point. I think in the example you gave there, if you thought it was going to save $100, and so you guaranteed it would save $80, but it actually did save $100, what does that actually mean?
Great question. The county keeps all savings. So, Performance Services doesn't take any of that additional money. There's no shared savings or anything of that nature. So, if we exceed the savings amount, the county keeps any excess, and obviously, you can do what you will with that.
Mr. O'Brien?
Actually, along those lines, has Performance Services had any municipalities in Indiana that have not met or exceeded the guaranteed savings?
We have not. So, you know, Performance Contracting is our only business. It's all we do. And so, we're very careful to make sure that every project is a success. And so, we did a large project with the, you know, city of Indianapolis about five or six years ago or so. We've also worked with other counties and other, so smaller cities in the state. We've worked with probably close to 200 school corporations within the state. We've done several projects at Penn Harris right down the road, and again, we make sure that those are all successful and they all meet their guaranteed savings requirements.
You've never once had to actually chip in and pay for the short call?
Correct.
Mr. Taderek?
Just based on the numbers in the contract and the agreement, I mean, I think it's commendable and it's great for our constituents and our community that you're guaranteeing that we're going to save $711,000 a year over life of the contract. And besides that, like you mentioned, we're going to be taking care of a lot of the facilities that we would have never had a way to pay for it, other than through this operational energy savings contract. So, I think it's good government and good public policy to be doing this, and we appreciate the engagement of Performance Services and their track record and speech. So, we look forward working with you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1318. Does anyone wish to address the counsel in favor of this bill?
Robin Chaloner, 25612 Shoreway Court, South Bend, Indiana 46619. I'm the Director at Portage Manor, and I want to thank the council and the commissioners and the special committees that came together to put together this contract. Our building that we work out of was built in 1906. It's a very old building, but it's been well-maintained, and this is another way that we can continue to maintain that building and house the less fortunate in the county. Currently, we have 133 residents of St. Joe County that we take care of, disabled adults. We just admitted four homeless people who are currently living there indigent. We get no revenue or income for them, but we are able to support them off of revenue from the state, which again, doesn't take any county money. So, again, I want to thank you for including Portage Manor in this project and investing in the buildings of St. Joe County.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill?
Evelyn Kirkwood, Director of St. Joseph County Parks. I too want to express our thanks on behalf of the Parks Board's staff and all of the visitors that use the St. Joseph County Parks for this little shot in the arm to help us cover some of the deferred maintenance that you addressed in terms of energy failings that we have had, aging boilers, water systems, water delivery systems, lighting systems, et cetera. So, we greatly appreciate this effort, this group effort by so many people, and thank you for championing the cause of energy savings in St. Joseph County, because that can only benefit all of our residents here in St. Joe County. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Please state your name and address for the record. So, you have, sir, you have three minutes to address the counsel.
Thank you. My name is Robert Griffin. I live at 4616 Fellon Street. I last left South Bend in 1965, returned in November of 2017. I'm a retired federal contracting officer, and I do have some experience in working with the Corps of Engineers and also Navy Facilities Engineers, both with the Army, Marine Corps, and the Department of Defense. And this plan is certainly good. I wouldn't, it's hard to speak out against energy conservation and base maintenance or facilities maintenance, because they're always underfunded, not only here, but in the federal government. So, I'm not going to attempt to do that, because that's a very, it's a worthy goal, and as a lady just spoke, does have an effect on people. What I would say is this, though, I've been looking at this for three or four days, and some of these numbers on the master energy plan look a little rich to me as far as some of the commodity purchased, as far as the values of the individual components. We did a little cross-check with some suppliers in the area, and they found that these prices were a little high. Based on my experience in federal contracting with energy projects, I also found these, they're a large sum of $315,000 for a part-time energy conservation manager. I can tell you that a facility the size of Fort Bragg, which probably has 500 buildings, not just 11, would never pay anywhere near that amount of money for an energy conservation manager full-time as opposed to part-time. So, what I'm saying is, I think this is a worthy goal. I think that, although I wish I was here in 2015 to sort of look at this RFQ, because a lot of these questions about past performance would have been probably by whoever the contracting officer was, but I would say this, it may be worth of your time to scrutinize some of these numbers in the master energy plan that you're being asked to approve tonight, to look and see if they're really a good investment. Take a real good look at that $315,000 figure for energy conservation, because I cannot remember, in my time dealing with this, when I wasn't shooting at people, I was doing these contracts from the 70s on until mid-2000s. That number is very high. So, it's a good, it's a good objective. The contract was probably properly written. I don't know if it was vetted by the state of Indiana. I know it is compliance with the law, which will allow this to take place, but the numbers are just a little bit, based upon my experience, a little bit high. So, that's my contribution. It's probably a good, probably a good bill, but it does seem a little bit rich to me. Regardless, whether you do or not, you always have to remember that you can make more money if the price is a little more realistic, okay? Because savings are savings. But if you're paying $50,000 for a $30,000 car, then your savings might be somewhat truncated. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the bill?
My name is Scott Peacock, and I reside at 1409 East Colfax, South Bend. I would like to request that this, this whole energy conservation contract could be postponed for a week or two, so that my little group here and myself could do a little bit more. Unfortunately, we haven't had the time, but we will definitely take the time in the next week or two to be able to prove that some of these numbers seemed a little bit high. And I think that our intent would only be to save money for the citizens of St. Joe County. And I know, I don't mean to be hypocritical, but a lot of the numbers just don't make any sense to us. I think it was in year 10 that the whole package started to break even. And I think I could probably be targeted, but I don't have the facts in front of me at this point, but I'd like to be given a little bit of time that we could just research this, because I think we could come up with substantial savings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Hearing none. Just lack of opportunity to rebut some of the comments that were made.
Yeah, I tried to take a few notes, and I always like it when concerned citizens are active and involved. I think it's always a great thing. The, with, I guess, with regard to having more time to look at this, we have been working on this for, I think, at least 18 months. I know we've had other public meetings where we've discussed the program. So, hopefully, people have had the opportunity to look into it and ask questions. I know others have in the past. Also, as part of that design process, so we actually, again, as I mentioned earlier, we actually did detailed plans, like for the Juvenile Justice Center. We had engineers actually create the blueprints and the specs, and then we not only got competitive bids for all of that. So, there's a lot of details that go into each of these measures, but we did get competitive bids. We did do a lot of detail work on it, and it does take a tremendous amount of development, long-term, and engineering over the past 18 months to put the project together.
Sir?
Could you address the question about the cost of oversight, $315,000, for the energy conservation special?
Yeah, so that, so essentially, that's a, that has to do with putting in what we call an energy leader in place. And it is a, essentially, it's a key element to the program of focused attention on energy conservation and managing the utilities long-term for the county. So, I guess, that is a significant energy savings component of the grand scheme of things. So, but also, it's not just those individuals that are put in place. It's also our team that's essentially setting up that whole program for long-term success. So, there's software, significant amount of training. We're setting up all the utility databases as well. So, there is one, one individual that's, you know, essentially tasked with that long-term, but the initial, but the bulk of that funds go towards the initial setup and establishment and training of that program to make sure it's started on the right foot, so to speak.
So, Dwight, I looked at proposal on that line, and just to verify, estimated annual utility savings, $110,000. Are we thinking, and then at the cost of that position for Anam, so are we thinking that person's position, that they're going to pay for themselves?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that's, again, kind of going back to our experience. So, we've done this at other large campus-type clients in the state of Indiana. One that comes to mind is Fort Wayne Community Schools. So, we save them actually a lot, probably about twice that amount for an energy manager in place. Now, they have more buildings, but we found it's a very quick payback when we have that focused, you know, focused individual in place to ensure that, again, as I mentioned earlier, lights are turned off. And not only these measures are implemented, which is part of the program, but then we go further, we take the next step, we look at other opportunities, other utility bills that are maybe on the wrong rate schedule, or other things that we could do long-term. So, that's their focus, just reducing the energy costs. And again, you're absolutely right. The point is that they pay for themselves in short amount of time.
Sir, when you say that they pay for themselves, unless I misunderstood the comment, I think the implication of the comment was, that's fine and good, but that number seems very high. If that number was lower, then the savings would be greater. Am I right in that interpretation of what you guys said, or not?
Not quite sure how to answer that.
No, that's what I said.
Isn't that what you said, sir?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
And so, just to be clear, one worker is not being paid $300,000?
Correct.
That's what I think it may appear to, if you're looking at the schedule, it might look that way. But that, that cost encompasses software, training, a whole team of folks that are supporting this person, and also interacting with the county employees and the county offices. And at some point, the county may hire a permanent role and pay them $50,000, $60,000, $80,000 a year, or eliminate that role, but it's not going to be a $300,000 year after year after year cost.
You're correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Peacock, did you, did you catch that, sir?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Nolan?
Additionally, this $315,000, all the things that Mr. O'Brien mentioned, that's for a two-year period?
That's correct.
That's for a two-year period? Okay, right.
The Performance Services will provide us for two years, because after that, it's up to the county, which you continue that or not.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. We have a motion on the bill. A motion to move for approval on Bill 1318 is made by Mr. Nolan, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any further comments from any council member in regards to Bill 1318?
I guess I would make the comment, based upon some of the things that were said, as far as the gentleman, the two gentlemen that spoke, they definitely were not saying they're against the project, but making there again, that implication that, given a little bit more time, could see additional savings. So, I guess with that said, is there any interest from this council, I know the motion's on the floor, but any interest of entertaining allowing them to do that?
Any comment on that question? Mr. Krasinski?
I would like to sit down with the gentleman just to get their reasoning and facts, just to see what you're talking about. I have no problem with that.
Any other, any other comments? I appreciate that. Any other comments or thoughts on that? There again, I know there's a motion on the floor, but... Any other thoughts or comments?
No motion. It's going to be out of the way.
Mr. Taderek?
Is there any disadvantage if we did not vote for this tonight in terms of implementation and completion of the project and energy savings, if it was postponed for an additional
Just to address that question, I would just reiterate that we have been working on this for several months, and the county does, has secured the financing. And so, the bond payment will be due, and I'm probably not the best person to talk to this for the county. So, it's really important that we start implementing the project so that we can generate the savings, so the county can make those payments. Also say that our original timeframe was that we would start implementing work, if we continue to delay it, contractors can not hold their bids. Sometimes, you know, pricing increases can occur. We've tried to lock them in pending a start date at this time. So, the thing that it does for us, it does increase our costs, and it pushes off your ability to achieve those, you know, achieve those savings, to make those payments.
One month would do all that, sir? Mr. Krasinski?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
You know, you've been very informative, Performance Services throughout this whole project. The one thing that I haven't seen is the actual quotes or the bids of the contractors that you're using. Is there a way that this council could be copy to that, because it was sent to us in a distance?
Well, I think, I think John Burke, your consultant, has reviewed those. I'm not sure if, who he shared those with, but we do have those. And I think some of the council members are aware of the contractors we invited to those bids. So, we tried, we did try to select local contractors for as much work as we could and still keep the project within our budget.
I understand all that.
But those bids are available.
Probably brighter than.
I'm not, I'm not sure how to answer that, but we have them, and we've, we've, yeah, we will share them with the, with the county.
Thank you.
Mr. Nolan?
As part of, as it was explained, as part of Performance Services, waiving business in this contract is included in that, is it's all public trust. So, I mean, at any point in time, whether it's tomorrow, or June, or after the project is done, you can see what their costs were, what their market's were, what their budget's were. It's all, I'm certain that's not public information, but this group is. Is that correct? Am I correct in what I just said?
Yes. I don't know that we would, I wouldn't, we would make that public.
Exactly. I said, if it's not public.
Public, public, yeah.
Information in this council is private too.
Right. You're, yes, you're the owner.
If a month was detrimental to the cost and pricing of the project, could, could two weeks be attainable? We meet again on February, we've had the public attorney tonight. Maybe just be the matter of a vote moving forward. Could we achieve anything in two weeks if we could get some of these questions answered and still achieve the same savings? We voted on the fiscal '27, had a special meeting, night of a council committee meeting, that would be, that would be the pleasure of the rest of the council.
So...
It's compromised.
Yeah, we want, we want you to feel comfortable with the process. So, whatever you guys think is best, it won't be, you know, certainly, it won't be ideal. We'd like, we'd like to get started, but we also want you to feel comfortable with the process. So, if you feel that's necessary, that's, that's one thing we did try to address in January, is go through the details of the scope of the project and answer any questions, so we could try to keep things moving. And so, we're, we're always, you know, willing to provide you the information that the county needs to make good decisions. So, it's whatever you think is best. We would like to get going, so we can generate those savings for you. You know, we are, we haven't led any contracts yet. We haven't issued any purchase orders, because we can't, we won't do that until you finalize our scope of work. But if there was a way we could get approval and still have those discussions, and if for some reason you wanted to modify some of the items, you know, one thing that we have in the improvement list is an owner-directed allowance. So, that, that's, those are funds that the county can use at their discretion to address, you know, items that come up in the project. And so, if for some reason, an item were to come out of the project, for whatever reason, it would go into that owner-directed allowance, and you still have control over those funds. So, that may be another way that if we could still potentially proceed with the project, we could get some of the lighting and some of the things that really, you know, have the largest impact. And then, if there was other discussions you wanted to have on some of the other line items, we could certainly do that and, and address it that way.
But to answer Mr. Taderek's question, if we waited two weeks, that would not be detrimental to the project moving forward? Did I hear you say that or not?
So, it would, it would not, it would not have serious consequence to the project moving forward, although I would, I would also say that every week we wait is another week we're not achieving the full savings for the county.
But it's a 15-year project, isn't it, sir?
It is. It is.
Two weeks out of 15 years?
It is. So, but, but you're, but, well, I guess what I'm saying is, is your first payment isn't waiting.
I understand that. I understand that.
Mr. O'Brien, I would add, dear credit, Phil, I mean, this is a transparent and public process.
It has.
You guys have been very informative.
Thank you.
Definitely. Without a doubt.
We've held several meetings. I know that the subcommittee has done a lot of work on this, and I appreciate all the work they've done to get us to this point, not trying to slow this process down. But some questions were raised. I didn't know we had any citizens with local expertise in doing the same kinds of things. I know Mr. Peacock has a very successful remodeling business, but the other gentleman, which has military experience, I didn't know where, but we had a citizen who had that kind of experience who could lend themselves to us in this process. But I'll do whatever. Another motion on the floor, so I'll yield the vote.
Any other, I'm sorry, Mr. Krasinski?
Phil, is some of these, some of these facilities, or it's kind of time-sensitive on what needs to be done there? I believe, you know, with the JJC and the chillers and so on.
You're right, especially with the chillers, ideally, we'd like to get those chillers in by the summer. I don't, you know, until we actually receive full approval, we can't submit a purchase order to the manufacturer to, you know, to find out when those will ship. So, that is, that is time-sensitive. So, the environmental items are probably most time-sensitive, and yeah, it would be probably the Juvenile Justice Center. The rest of it is, again, it's just a lot of work with those facilities to plan movement throughout those facilities, so we minimize any disruption to, in like inmates at the jail or other county workers in facilities. So, it just, it just... So it just, it ju- it just pushes everything back.
Any other comments from council? Mr. O'Brien?
I just want to make sure, putting all the questions together here. If we did approve this tonight and over the next few weeks or months, identify something in the project that we decide, no, this just does not make economic sense, it's $200,000. We could stop that, that $200,000, we could spend elsewhere because it would be part of the owner's allocated fund or development funds? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, that's correct. That's correct. So, um, and kind of going back to the earlier point, so, um, we, uh, we're, we're always open to, you know, working with local contractors and equipment suppliers. Um, but this is, this project is a little bit different because we're on the hook for the savings, so we've got to make it perform. So I'm not saying that there's not, but there may be, say, a product B that's cheaper on the market that maybe we might save a little bit money, but, but because we're on the hook for the performance savings for it, we have to be very careful of what, of what we're willing to install. Um, so we, we want to have your input, um, but in the end, we, we have to, we'll work together because, um, because there's a financial guarantee in place, if that makes sense.
Any other comments? Mr. Krasinski?
Phil, so then is the guarantee, the length of the fifteen years then, the guarantee on the equipment or, or is it manufacturer's guarantee or how do you get warranties work on it?
It is. So, so in general, it's, um, we don't warranty the, all of the equipment for fifteen years. So, so the nice thing is like, like the LED lighting that's going to be done, the burn hours are much longer, so you'll certainly feel comfortable, you'll certainly not be replacing LED bulbs within fifteen years. It's possible you might replace a few motors of that nature. So, but, um, so we don't maintain the equipment long-term, so your, your staff will still need to do grease bearings and things of that nature. Um, but, um, I'm trying to think of anything that we're installing that doesn't have at least a fifteen-year life cycle and I think everything that we are doing does.
Any, any other comments from council on thirteen eighteen? Hearing none, there is a motion on the floor to pass Bill thirteen eighteen. That motion was made by Mr. Nolan, it was seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Hearing none, further comments? Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
No.
Mr. Tanzraik?
No.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Trying to clarify, the two gentlemen that spoke, there's someone who's citing myself on six months or come back to this council or...
Uh, we, I mean, that, I'm sure that can be set up, that's...
No. Mr. Morton?
No.
If the record shows that bill number thirteen eighteen failed by a vote of five to four...
Mr. President, would you ask a question or...
Mr. Root?
It is in our rules that if a bill fails, it doesn't come back for six months, correct?
Correct.
So this is now dead for six months unless we have a motion to reconsider from one of the majority on the floor tonight.
You're absolutely right.
That's correct.
So the motion to reconsider would be, could bring it...
It would have to come from one of the people who voted no.
Correct.
It would have to have a majority vote to reconsider the question tonight.
Right.
Otherwise the project is dead for six months.
Right. I'd like to make that motion. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider, um, resolution R. four dash eighteen, Bill thirteen eighteen.
Second.
And in part of my motion, I'd like to postpone the vote to February twenty-second.
Second.
Motion to postpone the vote to February twenty-second, uh, is under reconsider, reconsideration. Uh, was made by Councilman Tanzraik, it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments on that motion? Mr. Tanzraik?
Mr., I have a question for our leading council. Does that, does that satisfy...
I believe it does.
...the failure of the five to four?
I believe it is.
Keep it alive?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Fair enough, clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mr. O'Brien?
Well, if I say yes, then we can reconsider a vote on it in two weeks? Is that good?
I believe that's...
Correct, yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzraik?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Hi.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
The record shows that the motion to reconsider, a vote of two weeks, was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
You'll have to notice that, yeah.
Clerk, please take, please, that's bill under amendments, Bill number six eighteen.
An ordinance many, ordinance sixty seventeen, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees in San Francisco County, the year twenty eighteen. Order.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
I'm, Mr. President, Bill number six eighteen comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner? Mr. Hammond?
So simply, we had a position open for the vast majority of twenty seventeen for programmer in the IT department. And so in the, uh, reconsolidation, uh, for twenty eighteen, uh, of the IT department, we decided to eliminate that position and have the money, $46,000 of it go for, uh, a technician and the rest just go to innovation technologies for equipment and, and whatnot.
Any questions from council from Mr. Hammond? Thank you, sir. We'll open the public six eighteen. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill six eighteen. Is there a motion?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion to pass, Bill number six dash eighteen was made by Councilman Tanzraik. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, would you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Hi.
Mr. Root?
He walked out.
Oh, well, then we'll come back. How about Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
The record shows that Bill number six dash eighteen was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Clerk, would you please next bill, Bill number seven eighteen?
An ordinance many, ordinance sixty seventeen, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees in San Francisco County, the year twenty eighteen, Department Thirty-two area planning commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
President, Bill number eight, uh, sixteen is under the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner? Petitioner? Larry?
Sorry. That was seven, seven dash eighteen.
I thought it was a little further down the agenda here. Um, this is, uh, part of the $25,000 that, uh, was allocated to our department for twenty eighteen. Uh, when we had to do that or made that request, that was in the middle of, uh, the, the budget cycle last year for this year. Wasn't quite sure exactly what positions I needed still to assist us in the transition, so, um, uh, we decided what to do and, uh, hired a, a part-time person. We've been paying that part-time person for twenty eighteen, uh, out of the intern line item where that $25,000 went into. Uh, so, um, we decided that the best, um, the best position for the people we want to hire is part-time under twenty, under thirty hours. Uh, so this $20,000 will, uh, cover, uh, one to two people part-time for that, uh, leaving the, the $5,000 behind to continue paying for the person we currently have in place.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open a public hearing on Bill seven dash eighteen. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is not closed. Is there a motion on seven eighteen?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion to seven eighteen was made by Councilman Tanzraik. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzraik?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Hi.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. The record shows that Bill number seven dash eighteen is passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, would you please read the next bill, Bill number eight dash eighteen?
An ordinance many, ordinance sixty seventeen, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees in San Francisco County, the year twenty eighteen, Department General Superior Court.
Mr. McHale, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, it comes to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Hi. Bridget Wazaluski, Superior Court Administrator. Um, we're Department Twenty. Do I say that now instead of Twenty-one? Just late. Um, Superior Court would like to add a part-time court reporter position to work in Title Forty Court only. This hourly position would be a hundred percent forty funded, uh, using the incentive fund eighty-eight ninety-five.
Any questions from council for a petitioner? Hearing none, thank you. We'll open a public hearing on eight eighteen. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, public hearing is not closed. Is there a motion on eight eighteen? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number eight eighteen was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman O'Brien. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanzraik?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Hi.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. The record shows that Bill number eight eighteen was passed by a vote of nine to zero. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our January twenty-third committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is not closed. Clerk, would you please, please read Bill number nine eighteen?
More access to appropriate and transferring matters will refer to hearings discussed in several departments here in this case, essential compliance.
May I have a month Bill number nine eighteen?
Mr. Morton, I have a question.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Under appropriations act commissioners, Healthwind Capital Project Fund, $200,000 from page four of the paperwork that we received tonight, I was wondering if Mr. Shalio or somebody else could explain the breakdown of the $200,000 of the Healthwind Capital Project Fund?
Bill Shalio, economic development offices on the eleventh floor. I, I'm sorry, it's been a long week. I can't remember where I live anymore. Um, I, I couldn't hear the question. I, I, something about $200,000, what are we using it for? Is that the question? Okay. So we have three professional service proposals we'd like to use. Those funding for one is for financial services, uh, one is for legal services, and one is for land planning services. Uh, the, the, the scope of the project is really to examine the whole Angela corridor or the whole state road nine thirty-three corridor from Angela to the state line. So the majority of the funds for the land planning would be used for that. The financial services would also be used for that same expanse. Uh, there would be some used, uh, to examine, uh, the, the potential for creation of a TIF district or a tax abatement proposal that, that could also fund, uh, some development in that corridor, uh, specifically in the Angela Douglas corridor. Uh, the legal services too would be used to help examine, uh, financial or, uh, legal issues as it relates to the relinquishment as well as any establishment of an economic development area. The total scope of those proposals, I think, is, uh, it's about 175, 180,000. We put some extra money in, so we wouldn't have to come immediately back in case, uh, additional, uh, cost related. Uh, we see some additional costs, probably most likely in the land planning proposal. Uh, we're going to be dealing with Roseland and how the nine thirty-three relinquishment would, would, uh, would affect the Roseland corridor. So I would imagine with public meetings and things like that, the scope of the contract, uh, we're proposing to use Avon Marsh, uh, consultants here locally. That proposal scope could expand a little bit, so we didn't want to have to come back midway through a project to ask for additional funding. So we put $200,000 in. We anticipate if we have less expense, we would ask the money be appropriated back to the Healthwind account. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. O'Brien?
You may have told me this before, but can you break out the numbers that add up to one seventy-five? How much is land? Can you...
Absolutely. So, excuse me, the land planning, forty-eight thousand. The, uh, financial services would be fifteen thousand and the, uh, legal proposal would be between, it's a time and, uh, or hourly basis, would, uh, would be seventy-five to eighty thousand is the estimate. So, just under 180-something thousand, I believe. Or just over 180,000, so I could do the math, but...
Did that legal number go up since last Friday?
I, I, the number I have in this posted notes is eighty, eighty thousand, so I, I mean, it could have gone up since our conversation. We had estimated between seventy and eighty thousand, so I mean, I guess, being conservative, put in an eighty thousand, then that would be the high end. Again, if we can be of resources, we would turn back whatever funds we don't use.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Morton, I have a amendment or a, a motion of amendment. I would move that the Commissioners Healthwind Capital Project Fund be reduced to 175,000. Second.
There's a motion on the floor to change, uh, the amount under the commission, Commissioners Healthwind Capital Project Fund from 200,000 to 175,000. There's a motion in the second on the floor. Any further council discussion? Mr. Root?
Let's go on, Mr. Root. Uh, I, I just wanted to, where are your numbers of funding to be planned by one seventy-five?
Mr. Shalio said the, if you add up the financial services, the legal services and the land planning services, it comes out to about 175,000. And then he's built in twenty to twenty-five thousand in case there's an overage. And we prefer that if he needs more money, he come back and ask us for it.
Any other questions from council at this point? Hearing none. We have a motion in the second on the floor. With that said, clerk, would you please take the roll?
My question is, are you voting, have you voted on the amendment yet or do you have to, or is it the motion?
That was, wasn't that the first motion?
Yeah.
That was the first...
That's what, that's what he's asked you to pull the council on, I believe.
Right. That was the first motion.
Okay. Thank you.
The first motion is for this or the whole bill?
This. Hi.
Root?
No. Just a clarification. We are voting on...
Changing, changing the, the amount. That was the first motion that was on the floor. The, the amount listed under F was $200,000. The first motion on the floor made by Mr. Tulloyan and seconded by Mr. O'Brien was to change that amount under the Healthwind Capital Project from $200,000 to 175,000. That's what we're voting on.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?[1753.88]
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
No.
Mr. Loin?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
No.
Mr. Morton?
No.
Motion fails. So.
Now you can have a motion on the bill.
Pardon? I have a motion on the bill.
On the bill? On the entire bill?
We have to do another motion, right?
Correct. Yes.
Right. Okay, since that motion failed, we need another motion on the floor.
A motion to approve bill number nine dash eighteen.
Second.
There's a motion to approve bill number nine eighteen, as printed in tonight's agenda. A motion in the second, a motion was made by Mr. Nolan and seconded by Ms. Hess. Any further counsel discussion on this motion? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes, all but F.
It's okay, you can do that.
Okay.
I can do that, though.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, all but F, no for F.
Ms. Hess? Loin?
Yes, but Nolan won.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Morton? Um, I guess I'd like to make the comment that, like was stated earlier, that there was some cushion in that two hundred thousand. So, if in fact that money is not used, that is returned to the county, correct?
We're going to back to that fund.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, the Healthland fund.
That's what I'm saying.
Which has about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
With that said, yes. Motion carries nine to zero, with the exception that you have three votes that were in opposition to section.
It's okay.
But let me show that the bill, bill number nine eighteen was passed by a vote of nine to zero, with the exception of a six to three vote that we were against item F underneath. Next on the agenda, under miscellaneous matters, we have bill number twelve eighteen. Twelve eighteen is the scripters' area regarding the twenty eighteen budget, Department of Nineteenth Circuit Court. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Mr. McHale, committee report out of Human Services Criminal Justice, sir.
That's for ninety-eight seventeen?
For twelve eighteen.
Twelve eighteen. It came with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Murphy's going to address.
The decision made today, this is a paragraph, the total amount of the budget does not change if this salary is excluded.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any questions for Mr. Counsel? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number twelve eighteen. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close, I'll close the public hearing on twelve eighteen. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to pass.
Sorry. Motion to pass, bill number twelve eighteen, was made by Councilman O'Brien. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Loin?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Hi.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number twelve eighteen was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number four eighteen? Four eighteen, ordinance of the San Francisco County Council proving collective bargaining agreement between San Francisco County, Indiana, and the telecommunications community of Indiana, absolutely. Petitioners, record, peace. Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, on number four eighteen, council, council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Peter J. Agostino, one thirty-one South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. Please approve, thank you. I'll answer any questions.
Oh, wow.
Mr. Triple told me I had to keep it short.
That was, that was smooth.
I corrected him, that short is not a good word.
That was smooth.
Brief is better.
That was smooth. Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Mr. Agostino? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Nolan?
At your pleasure.
It's going to be the next item, the next item.
Any other questions? Mr. Katanzright?
Did you give her the contract, duration of the contract?
Uh, twelve thirty, twenty nineteen.
Any other questions from counsel? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill four eighteen. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on four eighteen. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to pass.
Motion to pass, bill number four eighteen, was made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further counsel discussion? Hearing there, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Loin?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Hi.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Let the record show that bill number four eighteen was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clarification of no votes, of the no votes, I mean, council people that voted no, on bill number fourteen, ordinance number fifty-one sixteen, denying the special use filed by Charles Hayes Incorporated per U.S. District Court, case number three sixteen dash C V dash double oh seven, three zero, remand order dated December fifth, twenty seventeen. Mr. Triple?
Members of the council, on December the fifth, two thousand seventeen, in the appeal that was filed by Charles Hayes to the federal court regarding their denial of special use for the tower in Harris Township, the court found that there was substantial evidence in the public hearing and in the record that was submitted to the court to support the council's decision to deny the special use. However, the court also remanded, meaning that they're asking the council, members voted no, to provide some additional factual support for their no votes. The court was concerned that the matter was denied six to two, and only a couple of the council members actually made comment prior to voting in regards to what their basis was for denying the special use. So, again, the court is comfortable, it appears to us from an interpretation of the order, that there's substantial evidence in the record to support the denial. They would like to hear specifically from the members that voted no to provide facts on which they voted no. And I'm glad to go through the order of those that voted no. The first one is Mr. Nolan. But apparently, there's a question first, Mr. Nolan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I was just going to express to you why I voted no, but my esteemed colleague was first.
As usual, the president of the council pursuant to our procedures will get to have an opportunity to speak last.
I thank you for that opportunity.
So, I would ask Mr. Nolan first to render his opinion, why he voted no.
I guess my, the major reason was I was able to attend a public meeting that was held by the petitioner with several of my students around, thirty of the neighbors, prior to that vote. And it was, I don't think it was anyone that said one hundred percent of the constituents of the neighborhood, people that showed up were opposed to the current, or to the petitioner's location where they wanted to put it for, for multitude of reasons. Mainly, I would say the most prevalent one was that the township trustee wanted to negotiate putting the tower at the township land at the fire station there. And they were very eager to engage in those negotiations. And also, there were several members that expressed the property values could be diminished, devalued for the installation of the tower there.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Nolan. Ms. Hess?
Based on the number of neighbors who showed up that night to remonstrate, were very upset about having the tower in their neighborhood, again, affecting their property values, considering there was a viable alternative site that could be considered at the fire station. And they were apparently ready to negotiate. And Hayes Tower was not interested in doing that. And then the feedback, also from the council colleagues who did attend that meeting, providing additional support, that the neighbors were definitely not, were opposed to having it in their neighborhood.
And I'd also like to clarify, Ms. Hess, for purposes of the record, you did vote no against the special use?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan, the same question, I'll ask you, you did vote no, just to clarify that. Okay. The next one that voted no, I believe, but he can confirm that, is Mr. Taloyan.
Triple, I voted no, based on my concerns over the diminishment of the property values as expressed by the remonstrators. I also voted no, based on the fact that there was another viable and, in my opinion, superior site for the tower.
Thank you, Mr. Taloyan. Mr. McHale, you voted no as well, correct?
That's correct.
And what were the basis of your reasons?
One of the main reasons was that there was another location by the fire station in Harris Township. I was under the impression that they were going to get together with the Harris Township trustee. Also, the remonstrators made it clear to me that their property value would go down if it was where it was initially going to be located. I felt that by the fire station would have been a lot better place and would not diminish the property value of the fire station.
Very good. You voted no as well?
Correct. I voted no because of the remonstrator's arguments, that they were very concerned about what the project would do to their property values. And it seemed to me that there was another location that was fairly convenient, that would have worked that well, if not better, than the proposed site.
Thank you, Mr. Ruth. President Morton, you voted no.
Yes, this will be pretty redundant, but, but I'll get it aside. It was based, my vote was based upon the potential impact on the property values as expressed by the neighbors who came to the public hearing that evening. And they also expressed the fact that they felt like it was not, not pleasing as far as, I mean, obviously, no one wants a tower in their backyard, but not aesthetically pleasing, can't even say it. And number three, I was very, very surprised that Mr. Hayes and his company were not even willing to, about the alternative site. If I understand, that the township trustee had said he had tried and tried again to try to start some type of negotiations with Mr. Hayes and his company, and they were just unwilling to do that.
Thank you very much.
Aesthetically pleasing, that's what I was trying to say.
Very good. Yep, we'll get it. That's all I have, thank you.
Next, thank you. Next, under our business is bill number ninety-eight seventeen.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nolan?
If we can make, take a motion or make the motion, should we take bill number ninety-eight dash seventeen off the table and send back?
Do I hear a second on that? There's a motion to take number, bill number ninety-eight, take it off the table tonight and take it back to counsel for, for further consideration. There's a motion in the second on the floor. Clerk, I'm sorry.
I have a question to Mr. Triple under our rules. Does it obtain these kind of bills, Mr. Triple, as far as length of time to act on them? Is that, is that land use, I'm thinking of where it reverts?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure which bill you're referring to.
Ninety-eight seventeen's a crystal matter. I thought we had a rule, in our rules, that stated if we didn't act on something with a certain amount of time, it will automatically.
I'm not, if it is, I'm not familiar with it, but I'll look into it.
I did, that's why I didn't know if delaying this would be detrimental.
I, I think you can delay it, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Mr. President, anything after that?
Is it land use?
Land use has time.
Land use has restrictions, yes.
Council rules say that any bill that's not served after one year may be put on the public agenda by the petitioner. So, like the one year on anything else.
And we've had.
We could, we could return it back to committee.
We can return it back to committee, if that's the question.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion in the second on the floor. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Loin?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.